We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call, Keith?
Yes.
Peter?
Here.
Jeff?
Here.
Leah?
Here.
Diana?
Here.
Mary?
Here.
I am also here. Meeting has been properly noticed and certified.
Yep.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just.
Before we have the approval of the agenda, there was a requested change that we move 9C up to be immediately following 7C. So would anyone be opposed to that change?
I'll move to approve with the change.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Peter and Leah. Any questions on that?
So just to correct, 9C will now follow 7C.
Correct. So discussion on advertising will be immediately after consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Aye opposed? Thank you. Approval of the October 7th, 2013 regular meeting minutes?
Second.
Who was it? I heard the seconds all over the place here. Mary?
Jeff. Both at the same time.
All right. Any questions, comments on those meeting minutes? See nothing? All in favor? Aye. Aye opposed? Addressing the board. Any school news? Deb, do you have any school news for us?
Um, I guess, well, I don't know if you are aware of this, but the governor did sign the proposal to add additional funds to the school aid formula. And the Department of Public Instruction is telling us that by Wednesday of this week, they will have our new aid amounts out. And the extension to set the levy, it's normally November 1, has been moved to November 6. Just because they weren't sure how long the timetable, you know, how that was going to fall out.
Okay. Other school news? Anyone? No? We had an event today at one of our schools. Is that something we can, you can brief the board on?
Um, probably not in open session.
We aren't interested in names, but the interest of the community is there that something happened today, so.
At the middle school, kind of a situation came about that apparently a kind of a threat type situation. And the police were called and it's under investigation right now.
Okay.
And the parents of all involved, directly involved, were called.
Okay.
Is everyone safe?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Citizens' comments? Do we have any citizens' comments? If you're here for a particular agenda item, this would be your time to talk.
I have a citizen comment.
Yes, and if you could start with your name, please.
My name is Andrea. I am representing the K-25 PTO. And I'm here for more of a request. There's e-blasts that go out that the teachers do, that you guys do for letting everyone know that things are going on. And you know what? It's been approached before and we were told, yep, we can do it, but now we're told that we can't. We are just requesting to have an e-blast done for events that are going on within the month of fundraisers that are going on. And that's really our only request. And I do have information for you guys. This is just what we use for revenue and our expenses. And we spend like $500 just on copy and paper. And I am not a businesswoman, but I know that if you want to make more money, you should try to cut through our expenses. And we're, everyone's been going paperless. So I guess my request is if we're able to use those e-blasts for, you know, wobbly, scrap, maybe, this is what's my idea.
Okay. Yeah. I'm sorry, what was your name?
Andrea.
I thought this was cleared up last year.
I know.
So I don't know.
And then we were told that we cannot do it again.
Because I, this came up last year with the PTO.
Yep.
I know I personally asked the question of Dr. Anderson and he cleared it. I don't know, was there a change in philosophy or?
I guess it's my understanding that we are putting it out in email blasts with like our newsletters at the school building level and that. So if they're done, you know.
So those newsletters are not every month, though. And we have events with them every month?
I think they are. Well.
Rachel and I met twice last year with the PTO president, Jen Gray. We met again this year and talked about what was going to happen. And what the PTO has requested is e-blasts when those events come. And we said that even for our school, we tried to limit events to really important situations, reminders for parents. Because at my building level, we talked as a site council, that sometimes if we get too many e-blasts, parents just tune them out. So what Rachel and I, when we met with Jen, we agreed that we would put all the PTO information on our, in our school newsletter, which we e-blast out. Our deadlines for both buildings are the 15th of the month. And then if teachers have room in their weekly or bi-weekly newsletters, they put something in their calendar of the events. They don't have a lot of room because that newsletter from the classroom teacher is geared mainly towards the classroom. But we agreed with Jen that putting a date in there, and I think Andrea, for your last coffee fundraiser, when you guys didn't have time to get the paperwork out, if teachers have room, they put a link in their calendar so that not only was there a date for the reminder, but that link because you guys could run out of room. And so given the fact that they had limited space, we were trying to do it through our newsletter and then we scan any flyers. And it's on our website so that, and I know in our building, we update our website weekly. And so there are also a link to the PTO website if people want more information or want to get involved. So that's kind of what we agreed last year and starting this year, how to get that information out to parents.
Does that answer your question?
It does. I guess you're recommending that we do not do e-blasts, you know, the emails and stuff.
Well, I think, again, I can't speak for the K-2 level, but I know our site council, the parents on our site council mentioned that having too many e-blasts, because they get e-blasts when there are school board meetings, e-blast, you know, that so that they don't turn them out, they asked us to just send them when there is something really important going on that they don't want to forget. So we really, even like parent teacher conferences, all of those kinds of things, spirit days, we run through our newsletters and on our website. So we're trying to encourage our parents to use the communication tools we already have out there.
Other citizens' comments? Yes?
I'm Chris Kenevsky. And if my citizen comment is about advertising, should I say it now or?
Yes, this is your opportunity.
Or the discussion or something?
There is another citizen's comments that's item 10 on the agenda. That'll be the next opportunity.
Oh, okay, so.
Yeah, so if you have something to share, now would be the time.
Okay. Well, mine's written down. It's a bit lengthy. So I'm just, I'll introduce myself. I'm Chris Kenevsky. I'm a parent of a middle schooler in the district. I'm also a family physician and I'm the district's medical advisor. I'm here because I have concerns about the district considering advertising directly to students on this campus. My primary concern about advertising in the schools has to do with how the advertising can impact health. I've come before, many of you before, talking about this because of my concerns. And I think it's really important for the district to be cultivating an environment at school that encourages and promotes optimal health. And I think this could interfere with that. Having said that, why do I care specifically about advertising? Well, advertising is all about convincing people to buy things, right? I have concerns that the district may consider advertising products that interfere with being healthy or even lead to illness. And in this regard, my current concern is about advertising that promotes unhealthy eating, which is leading to obesity. My understanding is that the district already has a policy against advertising alcohol and tobacco products. And why is that? Because we don't want to promote their use, in particular to kids, but also adults probably. Well, as many of you know, obesity and being overweight are becoming significant public health problems, just like we don't want to advertise tobacco and alcohol products to avoid the health consequences of their use. We should be concerned about advertising, which is more likely to contribute to obesity because it is a health problem that is even greater than, in numbers, than tobacco or alcohol abuse. Is obesity really a problem? So a lot of people ask that, you know, is this a big deal? Is being blown out of proportion? Being overweight or obese significantly affects issues relating to appearance and self-esteem, which is what a lot of people care about with regard to kids, but it's so much more than that. It also increases the risk of developing many serious health problems. The one most people are aware of is type 2 diabetes. Type 2 diabetes used to be called adult onset diabetes, but now it's seen so often in kids, including elementary school kids, that that name no longer applies. Diabetes is a very serious condition that increases one's risk for heart disease, stroke, dementia, blindness, kidney failure, many other things. Did you know also that according to Mayo Clinic, the number of children who have fatty liver disease is rising? That's probably something you've not even ever heard of. Fatty liver disease is not something that was ever seen in kids before. It's now seen in kids in great numbers. And their estimations at Mayo Clinic is that 10% of kids in the United States have fatty liver disease. They say that it is the most common childhood chronic liver disease in this country. And the increase is thought to be due to obesity and the intake of unhealthy diet, particularly sugary and fatty foods. And most parents of children who have it don't know they have it because there aren't a lot of symptoms. Coronary artery disease is a real problem in young people. It's not something that we ever thought of before when we would hear young people, kids, people in their twenties having chest pain who walked into a clinic. We didn't think about, do they, are they having a heart attack? Do they need a stent? Are they needing bypass surgery? Well, it's a real concern now. Autopsies are showing that heart disease is starting in kids as early as elementary school. So we need to be taking this very seriously. Obesity is a real risk. It's increasing. It's increasing in kids. And we need to ask ourselves, do we want to be doing anything that could contribute to that? So let's say we all agree that obesity is a serious problem. Why worry more than our parents do, in particular about advertising? I never heard mine fretting about Saturday commercials, about sugary cereals. But things have changed. 2007, 2008, there was a study showing that of kids six and up, a third are overweight or obese in the United States. So that's six and up. And that's a tripling of the rate 30 years earlier. So it's different. Things are different now than they were when we were kids. Studies also show that kids who are overweight or obese have their weight problems persist into adulthood. For those of us who look at kids who look overweight and we think it's baby fat and they're going to lose it, it's not happening for most kids anymore. They're holding on to the weight. It's persisting into adulthood, which is supported by a report from the Wisconsin Department of Health Services that showed that over 50% of adults in the state of Wisconsin are either overweight or obese. So things are changing for adults, too. Not only are eating habits established in childhood, so that's an important reason enough to be thinking about these things for kids, but also the number of fat cells is laid down in childhood. That can't be changed. Also, a person's ability to lose weight and maintain a lower weight is decreased by having been overweight. So if we think, well, they're, you know, they can gain the weight and eat how they want now, and when they're adults, they can make their own choices and change how they eat and be healthy adults. And it's not true because studies have shown that by being overweight, you can't lose the weight and maintain a weight, a healthy weight nearly as easily. So by allowing kids to become overweight, we are committing them to a lifetime of struggling with their weight and therefore battling with very serious medical problems, of which I've already mentioned several, but also strokes, sleep apnea, high blood pressure, depression, many cancers. And I am here mainly tonight to avoid advertising directly to our kids, but I know that part of this is about finances. Finances are very tight for the district. I realize that. I think it's an important thing to talk about. Important discussions need to happen. But I think that we need to take very seriously the ways we improve what the bottom line looks like. And I think we need to think about this with regard to our staff as well. As already mentioned, more than 50% of adults in Wisconsin are overweight or obese. And as most of us know, it is not easy to maintain an optimal weight. But as the board of our district, you must be concerned about maintaining the health of the district staff because increased medical problems increases staff absences. This doesn't mean that you'll be deciding what staff can eat or ripping cupcakes out of their hands at break time, but we also don't need to be reminding them about foods they're trying not to eat when people are trying to eat healthfully and trying to eat well. So the question is, will we ultimately be saving money by advertising things that lead to poorer health? Might be saved in the first few years, only to pay further down the road. And then people might say, but advertising is everywhere. So what's different about school? Why should we care when there are billboards and TV and kids are seeing it everywhere? What's different about school? Well, this is a public educational institution. We need to take responsibility for what this institution is actively teaching our kids and what it is passively allowing to be taught as well. We need to take it seriously that many kids look to teachers, administrators, and other leaders, all of you, to be role models. So by allowing advertising in school, we will be sending a message that what we advertise is what we want kids to know. Kids may take the presence of images to mean that they are endorsed by the school and that they're good choices. Also, I think we need to respect that many parents work hard to teach their kids about healthy eating and would like the messages reinforced at school. But there are many kids who are not learning about healthy eating at home. No one will be telling these people that they can't take their kids to fast food restaurants or buying junk food, but we don't need kids going home telling their parents that they saw things at school that they want to go and eat, getting junk food. And isn't school where kids should be learning about healthy eating and having it reinforced when they walk down the hall or sit in the library or go to a sporting event? I also want to be clear that I am not opposed to treats or unhealthy snacks, and I, like everyone else, can be seen with my indulgences. But too many kids are getting an entire day's worth of calories in one sitting, or they're getting half a day's calories in one junk food shop. Treats need to be just that, and they need to be eaten in moderation. Unfortunately, kids' days are full of unhealthy foods, including while at school. And we should be mindful of how our institution contributes to that. There is no reason to be exposing them to images of beer or cigarettes. We've already got a policy with that message. And I think there is no reason to be exposing them to images of malts, fries, or donuts. It's bad enough that advertising is all around them. They do not need it in the halls, classrooms, gyms, bathrooms. Kids need to exercise their own willpower. I've heard that argument. They need to learn. They need to demonstrate that they can suffer consequences. I get that. I think it's really important. But this is really big, okay? These are lessons that will stick with kids for a lifetime, as I already mentioned. And so some of these choices will lead to a lifetime of consequences. And we also know that their brains and their judgment are still developing, and we can't pretend it's not true. Judgment is not thought to be fully developed until one is in their twenties. So let's guide them. Let's teach them. Let's not set them loose in an area full of unhealthy stuff and expect people to make good choices. Last time this subject was on the table, it was proposed that the board develop a mission statement or a set of core values such that when opportunities arose for income through advertising, the opportunities could be gauged with whether they supported the core values admission of this institution. I think that's a really reasonable way to attack this. I'm not saying that we shouldn't advertise, but I think we need to think carefully about it, and that would be a reasonable approach. Let's not forget, advertising works. Our corporations and small businesses would not put significant portions of their budgets toward it. But it is important to not accept advertising just to get the money, no matter what the cost. There are serious consequences. I'm not opposed to advertising. Let's advertise things that promote what we want to teach. Let's not advertise things we don't want to teach. We are an educational institution. There really is more and more coming out about how diet, lack of exercise, when we overweight, impact health. Let's heed the recent data and support the health of our kids and staff. I believe we would be doing our students and staff a great disservice if we allowed widespread advertising on campus. And I suggest that a policy be adopted that takes our role as educators very seriously and that we advertise only what we want to teach. So thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Katie?
Katie Rowe. I'm also here to speak on the issue of advertising, and I want to thank you for moving it up in the agenda because we're about to have a kid come in and draw us home, and I'd like to hear the discussion. Keith and Peter know this because I attended the marketing committee meetings a year, year and a half ago. Was it two years ago? I don't even remember. We went around and around on marketing and advertising. So I know I saw some notes from your last meeting that you were going to dig through the notes from that last discussion, and I would encourage you to do it because there were some really great points brought up. And I am not going to reiterate all the points I made at those meetings right now, but I'm happy to have that discussion with any of you when you want. I would just like to say we have visited this issue, and I think one of the things I heard, and go back in the notes to see if you heard it, those of you that were there then, that there's a difference between advertising and recognizing a donation to the school. And I think those issues kept getting confused. And people said, well, people want to make a donation, and you're saying no advertising, so we can't take the money. I think there's a real difference in letting people buy time to put their stuff in front of kids and us saying, oh, thank you for a donation, and us being in charge of how we recognize a donation. So as you further consider this issue, don't get those two things too mixed up. They're really separate things, and I think you can consider them separately and make a good point. The last thing I'll say, and again, I'll have this discussion with you more whenever you want, but the last thing I'll say tonight is, Dr. Anderson did a lot of research at the last stage here with other districts to see what does a banner in an outfield get you, or what does this get you? And frankly, the marketing committee realized, it's pennies. You don't get a lot for this. So it's not a big revenue stream to put an advertisement up in the outfield. So go back to those notes or do your own research, but I'm opposed to advertising in school.
Thank you. Other citizens' comments? Seeing none? 5A, consideration of financial reports.
Ooh, ooh, ooh. Second.
Peter and Jeff, questions? You may have all seen that Deb sent out so proactive addressing some of the peculiar expenses that we had this month.
It was very helpful.
I assume everybody can review the accounts payable summary. If there's no questions or comments, we have a motion by Peter, seconded by Jeff. All in favor? Aye. Aye opposed? 6A, personnel transactions?
You have, should have two sheets, one original one and then an addendum as well.
I didn't see the.
I didn't get an addendum.
When did the addendum come out?
Didn't I send it?
Did you send it?
I didn't get it.
Today? I didn't see anything come today.
I checked. It's 5:00 and I hadn't.
Well, that's my fault. I honestly, maybe I sent it and it didn't finish pushing a button.
I have my copy if people want to review it. Sorry.
Can I just?
Yep, actually, you can, I can, you guys can share. Oh, Scott does a copy, too. Thank you.
Can I abstain from part of this?
We're, that changed all of it.
Are you sure?
I really, that's a relative.
Okay.
Well, why don't we do it as two?
We can do it as separate, yeah.
Can you see that? Yeah. I'd like to abstain from 3A because I'm related.
Can you explain the second sheet? Number one?
No, I don't have it. The second sheet, number one, we have a student who currently receives off-site instruction. And we kind of start, we had it in our budget, but we kind of started that we advertised and we really didn't get anyone. So we're having kind of a, kind of a sub fill in until we could get someone. And now we have someone that's agreed to do that. So it is, we knew last year, we had this obligation to provide this education off-site. So we budgeted for it, but we didn't actually have, when we advertised, we didn't get people interested. So we've had the position being filled in by the person it's mentioned, and now we have someone that's willing to do that, you know, as long as we need that. And you can see that's only contingent upon the student continuing and needing that off-site service, which.
Is this related to one of the events that we had last year?
I'm assuming last year, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And this doesn't impact or take away from her time within the district?
No, because she's currently part-time, so she's just actually adding some extra.
Okay. Both sheets.
Thank you, Jeff. Motion to approve both sheets by Jeff.
I would actually.
Yeah, we were going to.
I meant that to hold out 3A. Because, Keith, that's.
3A is a relative. I might elect to abstain then.
Okay. I'll make your motion.
Yeah, okay. One second.
Okay. So motion made by Jeff, seconded by Peter to approve both sheets with the exception of 3A on the addendum. Any other questions?
I'm C1. We had a long conversation about paraprofessional and how many we could have, et cetera, et cetera. So I guess I'm kind of curious as to, was that because somebody else resigned? Or, you know what I mean? Or was that accounted for?
C1 is actually because of an increased need with a certain population at IC.
Okay. So it's a safety issue?
We had some changes and, yes, and we need to add more time because of that.
And just to worry of the number of hours means that that person will be getting benefits?
Yeah, I realize that, but because of the concerns we have right now, we just need to add more time for someone.
There was actually a long discussion when we went down on the hours. Was this a person? The discussion was those who were currently in the pool who were affected were given first opportunity to increase.
And she was a previous employee and was reduced, but now we find we need more time because.
So we're living up to that good faith promise to do that?
Yeah. She's also going to be taking over my crossing guard duties in the morning.
So funny to see up there.
I know.
Which intersection? Which intersection?
Right, oh, in front of the IC.
Do we have any other questions on personnel?
No.
Okay. So we've got a motion by Jeff, seconded by Peter to approve both sheets with the exception of 3A on the addendum. All in favor? Aye. Aye opposed?
So I'll move to approve 3A, second sheet.
Okay. Motion by Peter, seconded by Jeff to approve 3A on the addendum. All in favor? Aye. Aye opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. 7, consent agenda. Anyone have anything that they would like to have pulled out?
I want to pull out the education one. I have a couple, just statements, not necessarily questions, but statements.
Okay. Anything else anyone would like pulled out of consent?
I have a question on an administrative report.
Okay. Why don't we just take them one at a time then? There's only three of them. So 7A, the administrative report?
Yeah. And I see the "and" here. Is it okay if I, that's a question directly of the "and"?
Sure.
Okay. And in your report, you say lockdown drills, our first lockdown drill took place on Thursday, October 17th. Student staff did a great job following procedures in timely manner. And my question isn't only directed at you, but you're the one who mentioned your report. Where do the parents go in the event of a real life and death crisis?
Parents that are in our building when that announcement.
Parents, parents who are within five miles of the building. Where do they come when they hear that there's a real crisis in one of our buildings? Where do they come when they hear that there's a real crisis in one of our buildings? Where do they go?
Well, if an announcement is made and those parents are not in our building, they probably will be locked out of our building because we lock down the building and then we tend to provoke in the building.
But they tend, they tend to get in the way. Other people are trying to fix the problem if they're coming from four different directions converging on a building, even if the doors, doors are locked. Have we ever taken our lockdown procedures to the level of including parents, like the parents report here, staging area, and then practice the reunification of the students with their parents when the crisis has passed?
I think that's a good question for Deb because I think that it's district-wide because when we go into lockdown, it's probably going to involve all buildings in our district. And I think that that is something that we're talking about with our local law enforcement and we're not, we're not operating in isolation. Our safety committee has had at least two meetings with local fire and law enforcement personnel. And I think that is a very good question because just as we saw, there's been a holdout last December, out of ease, people come, they want to make sure their kids are safe. And what they have to realize is please don't get in our way. Let us help make sure we've got things under control and doing everything we can, working with proper authorities to make sure that we've taken care of our first and foremost priority, our children and staff.
Last, last January, Sue Bryce and I went to the session, school board convention, I talked about when we came back. And the retired police officer from Milwaukee that gave the session said that that's the one thing that's missing from most school districts with their rehearsals is engaging the parents and the parents know where to come in case of a real crisis. Where do they, where do they go and where do they, what's their holding area? And how do they get, how then do they get reunited with their, with their children?
Well, and I think today our safety committee met and one of the things they talked about was preparing some text messages that would go out to the community of parents. And so they're trying as much as possible to envision what they might encounter and have different messages ready to go that would most likely improve that information.
Yeah, we're trying to come up with like a bank of messages that would cover most situations so that depending on what is going on, we would have guidance for the parents. And that would go as like a text message and/or an email blast, probably.
Peter?
So what is the update? I mean, not just last year, there was a shooting today. Two kids died. I mean, what's the update with our security plan? Are we expected to hear something shortly on where we're at?
And like Ann said, they have just met recently and they're really coming together on a final plan with others involved.
So do we have a timeframe or do we have some, oh, come when we can expect to hear something?
And we will not, probably, we aren't going to put the whole security plan out for public either.
I'm not saying that, but I'd like to hear...
But we will share it with the board.
Update where the progress is.
And Teresa's been very involved with that, working with the different groups, but we will definitely, when it's in its final form, bring it to the board.
I mean, they've been working on it a year. I guess that's why I'm kind of curious.
Yeah.
And I know there are lots of pieces because we're, we're right there with you, you know, trying to figure out if when we move forward with the law enforcement and the fire department, you know, we have police officers come through every building to kind of make a recommendation. I think that went to the board last year. So I think it's just a matter of every time we come forward with something to the board, there are so many pieces, then it's a matter of what do we want to move forward with? I think last year when we came forward with some of those recommendations, there were a lot of cost involved. And then I'm just not quite sure where it ended up. So that's why Deb said it's coming back to the safety committee and then we're kind of moving forward as an administrative team with the board. And I know it's got to be timely.
Well, my fear is, if I may, Mr. Ketterer has reminded me of this a few times. I tend to remember a lot of that stuff that gets dropped and I think we let that go by the wayside and nobody followed up on it. It was relationship to the alarm system, the glass, and closing the doors. It was a whole domino of stuff that just stopped. Nobody had a follow-up discussion, you know, and I get in trouble for hammering on asking about it, but there were two more kids got killed today from some of the stuff we should be already be doing. And I'm just fearful that we're letting things go by the wayside. So I would expect...
Well, I know they are working on some of those issues to get them in a final form.
Keith, now can I ask a question of Jeff?
Sure. Jeff, I've mentioned this a time or two before, I don't know what the answer is, but from my front porch, I can hear your morning announcements, chapter and verse, and I know where every kid by name is being told to go to a certain place. And I live half a mile away from our building. Is there a way that you can shut off the outside speakers so I don't know when Emma Erickson is on her way to the front office or things like that? Because a bad person hanging out outside, all they have to do is be within a half mile of your building and you can hear the morning announcements. And we hear students' names come across that and what they're expected to do next. And you can learn an awful lot of information by, about your students by name simply by being within a half mile of your building in the morning.
Well, I'm glad I'm being informative. The other part of that is I think the answer is yes. We could deactivate the outside speakers for that. I'd have to consider the ramifications of that though, because we do use it as a communication device. Perhaps limit the information going out or maybe there's a way to control it in terms of when it's needed outside versus inside. I'd have to look into that. I doubt that that would be the case though because I think our PA system's relatively antiquated and so we'll have to make adjustments.
It just strikes me as a little bit less than security conscience when I can hear the names of students who are being told where to go from half a mile, mile away outside the building. I could be a bad person in a dark blue van waiting to pick somebody up and I, and I'm sure you can hear far away from my house, but I can hear every, they come across nice and clear, but I can hear from my front porch.
Yeah, I've heard that before too. I didn't realize there was some scriptiveness to locating students, but yeah.
Well, you know, your ladies in the front, they will say so-and-so, please report to the office. That's not an unusual announcement, is it?
So is your concern that somebody would be called to the front and a person would hear that and then come and pick that student up and whisk them away? I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand why that's a problem.
I just don't think the general public, I just don't think the general public needs to know when a girl is being pulled out of class and being sent, sent someplace and, or a boy for that matter, matter either.
I guess I didn't think that that's who gets called for announcements. Like people get called because they left the retainer in the cafeteria or they get called, you know what I mean? Like I had never thought of it as a negative thing necessar, yeah. Usually my daughter getting her lunch, but you know what I mean? Like, so I guess I didn't realize that.
I guess there's two issues at play. I'm hearing there's a negative thing, but you're talking about security relative to that. I view those as two separate things. I certainly agree with you. It's certainly not a negative connotation to think that a person is called down to the office for various reasons. So in terms of hearing that and having it be a negative, I don't see that, that happening in terms of that. In terms of security, I suppose that would need to be considered. If it does give the location of that person at that moment, at that time, what the level of security risk that is, I don't know. Anyone going into our classrooms at any time, well, there's 25 upwards, 30 kids in that room too. If they're trying to pinpoint one student at one time of the day in a random fashion, I suppose that could happen, but...
Well, I think if nothing else, because I don't know that this conversation's going to end up, you know, at the same place, but food for thought is how much information is shared and how that information is disseminated, so.
The bottom line, if you need a student in the office, their parents, their child, for some reason, we're going to make a PA announcement for them to get there because oftentimes our teachers are teaching. They're not picking us up and visiting with us about those issues. So that's typically what would happen in that situation. So that pattern does continue. If we wanted to stop, I suppose I could just make it stop in terms of deactivating the outside speakers in that way.
Well, I'm actually talking, I'm seeing that you're building, Jeff, because I never hear the morning announcements from the IC and that building's even closer to my house. I just hear, I just hear them from the middle school. And so there must be some way of making those announcements without projecting it out across the fields.
It's probably versus outside speaker systems and not having them or something of that nature, so.
Keith, anything else on administrative reports? Anything else from anyone else on the administrative reports? Thank you, Ann and Jeff. Peter, you had something on the education, well, actually, I might as well take care of this. Administrative reports, do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you, Peter.
Second.
Thank you, Keith. Last chance, any questions, comments on administrative reports? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye opposed? Okay. The policy committee report, an approval for October 7th, 2013?
So move.
Thank you, Jeff.
Second.
Peter? Any questions or comments on that one? No questions? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Aye opposed? All right. Education committee report, an approval, October 14th. Peter?
Two things. One is I just want to echo, and I know we have it later on, but I want to echo how severe the bullying policy is. If you've watched anything that's going on down south with the parents not being charged, I think, and I'll say it quite candidly, I think our village leaders have the opportunity to finally take the lead on something. And the municipal ordinance that's being suggested, that we suggested at the joint meeting, I don't want them to wait personally for the county to act. I think they can have an opportunity to lead from the front. Those, one, two moms were now arrested, so the severity of this is global, so we need to pay attention to that. I'll have more discussion when we get to that, but I just wanted to echo that very forcefully that parents are responsible if the kid pulls a trigger on a gun. Parents are responsible if the kid drinks at home and has a party. There's no reason the kid parent can't be some responsible for habitual offense of bullying or harassment. There's no problem with that. The second thing I want to have, and this is just a comment, and I want to make sure that we're all on the same page from my memory from when it was first discussed for 4K. There's a lot of people in the community who are already viewing this as a done deal. I'm not necessarily in favor of it or against it at this point, but I had some very severe hesitations that were not geared per se on the 4K process. And I want to make sure we just follow up on that, we don't let that go by the wayside. My biggest one, and I want to make sure that this is addressed, is one, we're talking with all preschools. Two, that they're on board. Three is, I don't want to see us start a program that's going to cost any of the preschool teachers their job or their employment. We have to come up with some avenue to rescue that. Three of the largest preschool programs in town have religious affiliations and there was a lot of discussion to ensure that they won't have to lose their curriculum to meet state needs. So I don't want that to fall by the wayside as you're doing more research. I don't have a discussion per se about it, but I just want to reemphasize the points that were raised at that particular board meeting. And with that, that's all I really wanted to emphasize on there.
They met today, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything, anyone else have any questions, comments on the education committee report? Nothing? Okay, do we have a motion? Thank you, Jeff.
Second.
Thank you, Leah. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. All right. Now we have moved up 9C, which is our conversation on the advertising for the district. And, you know, as it's been pointed out actually by Ms. Rowe and I think you're, I don't know that, both of our citizens' comments brought it up, but this has been a long conversation within the district. And I think as we touched on at our last meeting, the stumbling blocks have been, as I recall, and feel free to correct me, are, how selective can we be about advertising? You know, we talked about the fast foods, we talked about soda companies, we talked about religious organizations. Where or how, if we determine that advertising is going to be acceptable or something that we want to pursue, as I recall, that was one of the biggest issues that we had. And Peter, maybe I should turn this over to you because I think you helped lead that advertising group. But, you know, we had a lot of time spent, a lot of interest from the community as well as at the board level. And I think we eventually just, our wheels got, kept spinning, 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 but we weren't going anywhere. And Peter, do you care to elaborate on that? Or Keith, I think you were also in some, a number of those meetings. Would you care to elaborate a little bit on the history of this conversation?
Happy to, if you... Go ahead, Ann. So it came up about two and a half years ago again. So the board had dealt with it several times before that. At that time, it was actually referred to the marketing committee. At that time, we created a group specifically to talk about alternative revenue sources, of which advertising and naming rights were the largest discussion of time for that. Myself, Colonel Bocken and Mr. Koos sat on that group. We had a lot of in-depth discussions. The biggest thing was trying to really wrestle with the fact of limited funding. How do we offset the shortages or the differences in the costs? So that was kind of where that group went from. We had a lot of price comparisons, a lot of criteria, we fell into a lot of things. I think globally, a lot of people were in favor of it, but they fell into the minutia and they got to arguments about this or that and different things. I think we're at a crossroads as far as finances go. We have to start, we've made a lot of difficult decisions over the last couple of years. This is something that definitely warrants more discussion and follow-up. Prime example today, Mr. Bronick brought up the fact about our scoreboards in excess of about $25,000. Now, to be very clear, we advertise already as a district, so we do that and we take money for it. So it tends to, people are happy in certain situations when it doesn't affect them per se, but they don't really want a formal policy on it. So we do that already. We do it when we sell food. We do it with our wrestling calendars. We do it with a whole gamut of stuff. The new baseball field, the beautiful masonry has a sign on it. Our indoor score clock has a Pepsi sign on it. Now we're at a crossroads where we're looking at really four scoreboards that have all went down at the same time, about $25,000. Do we make an offer to Pepsi and say, "Please replace our scoreboards. We'll sign a five-year contract, put your logo up on it." These are some things we need to start wrestling with and have a real candid discussion about. I get to the point about the minutia, about Culvers and all that other stuff, and I accept that and I get that point, but we really need to start seeing it in a global picture. And maybe we do call it something different, naming rights, not necessarily advertising, but I think we warrant a more thorough investigation this time. And to be frank, I think the largest obstacle last time was, was one individual that dragged it out. And I think we need to really progress and see all the positives on one way or the other.
Keith, you care to add to that?
For four and a half years, I've been saying that I'm in favor of advertising. That's just where I stand on the issue. It's not a secret. I'm not hitting that from, I respect the opinions of those who disagree with me, but I still don't see that there's anything inherently evil with advertising. I certainly, I certainly would draw the line and continue to draw the line at alcohol, tobacco, things that, things that propose that type of severe risk. But, you know, just, just for example, we have one grocery store, our big grocery store, Miller's Grocery. Well, if Miller's Grocery wanted to donate something, well, everybody buys groceries and we need groceries, but they also sell alcohol and they also sell bacon, you know, or the things that would go in all the fast, fast food restaurants. So they sell, they sell some things that are unhealthy. Are we going to reject advertising from one of our larger employers in town because of some of the things that they sell? I don't know. I mean, I would gladly accept a sizable donation from Miller's Grocery or Sloan Implement or American Family, just to name some, Premier Co-op, just to name some of the businesses in town that employ, in some cases, employ our students and certainly parents of our students. So I would say with restrictions on things like alcohol and tobacco, I would at least keep the door open for advertising because we have to do something to offset, offset the rising cost of this district without taking it out of things that we, we agree should, should be funded. We're going to try to give some type of pay raises to our staff, if not this year, in the near future. Well, all of these things go into, go into like the general quality of our district. So I think I said at the last board meeting that I'm in a lot of gymnasiums where advertising is commonplace. And I use the Greenheck Fieldhouse as an example. They even have a small ad in their fieldhouse that says, "To advertise, call this number." And they're actively soliciting it, so. I also think that if we're going to, and believe me, ladies, I do respect, I genuinely respect your position on that, but if we're going to say, let's just say for example that the majority of this board agrees with the two ladies who spoke tonight, then we've got to quit serving hot dogs in our lunchroom and we've got to quit selling cotton candy at football games. at football games, we've got to, we've got to be willing to say, if we really, we're either all in or we're not. But, you'll see dozens of our kids buying cotton candy at any given football game, and I don't see anybody running around saying that we're doing something wrong there. The last time I was at the, I see something to say hi to my grandson at lunchtime, he was eating a hot dog. That's not exactly the healthiest food, so if we're teaching kids that hot dogs are a good thing for lunch, then I don't see a problem, I don't see how we can say advertising McDonald's or Culvers is bad when we serve similar food in our dining hall, or, excuse me, in our dining room.
Back in active duty.
Back in, yeah, sorry.
If I may, are you done?
Yes.
Is okay, Michael?
Sure.
One more bit of history too, is last year, we had a fraternal group in our town, American Legion, approached us about sponsoring a classroom. And despite our knows, we denied them, because we got caught up in the minutia, when they were willing to refurbish the room, and all they asked for was their name on the, on the wall. Yet, we've taken money for lots of other stuff, but yet, we denied something of that regard. So it's quite, there's a lot of history here, and there needs to be a lot of in-depth discussion to really kind of focus on big pictures and not let the minutia fall by.
Leah.
I think we're actually, okay, so I, I work in marketing, it's what I do, and I don't think we're talking advertising, we're talking sponsorship. I mean, it's not like we're going to post pictures around the building of, you know, McDonald's cheeseburgers and Pizza Hut pizza, you're talking about a logo on a, on a sign or a backstop or whatever. I mean, I think there's a difference here, it's not like you're going to walk in the bathroom and they're going to say, hey, you should go to McDonald's for lunch today. But the McDonald's M might be on the back of a T-shirt because they sponsored some football event. So I think, I think there's a little bit of difference there, in my mind. But also, Miller's could not, per our current policy, Miller's could not give us any money because our policy says that anyone that has any basically, if they sell alcohol at all, they can't. So Miller's couldn't, Spring Garden Restaurant couldn't, Grumpy Troll, but it's a brewery, so that's kind of a.
Premier Co-op?
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot, I mean, so, yes, we don't want to, you know, put the Budweiser logo on something, but we may need to rethink that policy if we forlook at this. And I'm in the same boat you are, I'm.
Walgreens?
Yeah. I mean, you're, we've got a lot of local businesses that we probably will need to help, and 25 grand for four, you know, signs that we don't have, but we sell Pepsi at our events. So yes, we're marketing Pepsi, but we're also marketing, we make money off the Pepsi we sell, so, I mean, it's, it's the world we live in.
The sponsorship versus advertising is interesting, because that's something that was mentioned to me, that, you know, the differentiation there. I don't know if anybody wants to further that conversation, but that, I think, is key, because you're not talking about ripping coupons off the, you know, doors of the bathrooms, but, you know.
Right, and you're not sitting at an event, like, like me, I'm dieting right now, so, you know, I don't want to look at the picture of the nice cheese pizza across, but, you know, the Pizza Hut symbol, all right, yeah, I've seen that, you know, I can brush by that, but I think there's a huge distinction between advertising and marketing and sponsoring something. That's just not too simple.
Does anybody else have something they would like to say about this? Jeff, is there anything that you recall from conversations you want to add, that maybe Keith and Peter have left out?
I know, before you guys got on the board, this was a heavy conversation about this, about advertising, and it was more toward naming rights. And back then, you know, I was opposed to the naming rights toward anything. I'm not opposed to, you know, advertising stuff for our gain, like our scoreboards and that are going on us, but to the point that naming rights, I had a big problem with that, and I didn't want to do that. And I still don't have a problem with the, you know, the part of putting a piece of new equipment in our building, but we don't really need to say to Pepsi or to any other soft drink company that, you know, we want you to do this, you know, we could ask, like Keith said, American Family, we can ask the Wisconsin Milk Marketing Board, because they sponsor WIAA events for the state competitions. You know, we can check out all kinds of other areas to come up with ways of covering this expense too. And, you know, I would like to research that portion of it.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, your interest might lie in a targeted sponsorship initiative? So as opposed to putting out a general policy, our approaching certain organizations and asking whether or not they'd have interest in sponsorship, would that be accurate?
Well, I, yeah, but I would also ask in town.
Sure.
Corporate businesses too, because, you know, I work at a place that has over 100 employees at it, and they might offer some money for that too, if they were confronted.
Okay. Mary, anything you want to add?
How did you know I had something burning? I feel like not having a policy, we have a policy. So, we have Pepsi on a scoreboard, we have Ostrander Masonary on a, on something. I don't know what else is out there, because I haven't had the time to look through each of our buildings and each of our places. So, I hear what people are saying, but we already have things that are in our buildings that our kids are seeing. And I guess my concern is by not saying it, we run the risk of a very well-intentioned person saying, hey, I just got $25,000 from Mountain Dew to put on the sign, and we put it up there, not realizing that there was no, there was no thought to it, I guess is what I'm saying. So, I think we need a policy on it, I think we need it to be something that's not dragged on forever and ever, it sounds like there's a lot of really good history that was done, it sounds like there was some really good input by people, and I feel like we need to move forward with defining what it is. Middleton has a policy, Wanakee has a policy, I think Deb did some research on it and found other areas that have it. So I feel like it needs to go to policy, have some discussion around it, or a work group of some form, or a committee that looks at it, and bring it back, and let's set a deadline of having it done fairly quickly, because it, it sounds like it took, it was labor-intensive. And I guess I'm kind of confused about, can we just move it along? Because it feels as though there's plenty, plenty of precedence that's set, and the longer we wait, the more that there, there's advertising going up, as far as I know. So I was somewhat surprised when it came up the first time, because I've been around the buildings, and if you walk into Verona High School, it's all milk marketing board when you walk through the, especially by the athletic area, by the commons, so, and I'm pretty sure we have stuff in our cafeteria that's on drink milk, the milk mustache thing, which is all milk marketing board. So, I get, and to be honest with you, I've always been a fan of keeping things local, I have a hard time paying for wrapping paper from a company that I know takes 50% of that profit margin, when I can just give $20 to the PTO at the middle school. I've always had an issue with that, and so I think if we did it mindful, this has potential, it's not just about $25,000 for a scoreboard, but instead it's about, how can we get the most bang for our buck and keep the most money within our own community and help our local businesses? So, if you have a business and we can, you're willing to give us $100, and we can keep, you know, 80 or 90, or, 80 or 90, sorry, I just saw a child. So, again, at the end of the day, what do we answer to? We answer to kids, right? We answer to making sure that they are in a good place and that we're educating them, and I think if we move forward with that kind of central vision, we need a policy in place that will allow us to provide them also. If we're denying, if we don't have scoreboards, so they can't play basketball or volleyball or do the sports that they like to do because we say we can't do this, I think there's, there's a damage on that as well. So I, I think what I'm saying is, we need to go about it, be very careful, there's a lot of smart people that are committed to putting together something that is solid, and I think that we need to do that, or else we run the risk of having Budweiser show up, and let's be honest, if it showed up, quite frankly, on the other side of our 26 acres that we own, I wouldn't know it for a long time, I never drive by there, I have no idea if there was a sign, there could be a sign up there right now, and I'd have no clue. So I think, again, without a policy, we kind of are running the risk of having that.
Thank you. Diana?
I agree with Mary, I think there needs to be, I think it should be a committee that, a special committee that reviews what we want to do with this. It's important for me to look at the distinction between advertising and recognizing sponsors to our district. I think advertising is a completely different thing. To me, I think, I think images, I think, you know, hamburgers, pizzas, things like that, and I think there's difference between a logo and the actual product in your face. So I think it's important to look at the difference between advertising and recognizing sponsors to our school district, and I think there needs to be a policy from the place.
Okay, thank you. So, shifting the conversation slightly, still obviously in line with advertising, but away from why, for, or against, the last time around, we formed a committee, and I'm, I want to poll all of you to see what you feel might be a more effective way to do this. Because before, each time, I mean, if we go around the table, and we just did, each one of us has a slightly different spin on what this means to us. And when you get a committee together, you're going to have, however large that committee is, people with different ideas, and pretty soon, the time gets, where does the time go? Because you're trying to accommodate multiple facets or multiple variables based upon the individuals that are sitting at the table. So, a thought that I had is plagiarism. Looking at one of our neighboring districts' policies on this, but using that as a starting place, or.
Jumping off the.
Yeah, exactly. Gives us an opportunity to say, okay, here's what they have, we can go as far as contacting them and say, hey, we downloaded your policy, what do you like, what don't you like, et cetera, et cetera. But trying to get those first few steps out of the way before we pull a committee together, because otherwise, I'm afraid, if you throw people into a committee to try to talk about something like this, we're going to end up where we were two years ago. That's my thoughts on it. Peter?
Ms. Silo actually brought up a good point about dragging their heels, I think if we got, like you said, the work, get things organized, we could actually really send that to the admin team and their group to start the initial steps. But policy may be the best spot to send this in the preliminary stages, to work out some of those questions. And there's three fairly good opinions on that, we all seem to be able to have a little bit different, but could share those and kind of get the best policy before going forward. I'd also, like us, I think we've all kind of agreed a little bit on the sponsorship, I'm hearing that tone, we have, I echoed this earlier, we have one scoreboard that does not work at all, and the other three are dying. I would like to give permission to Mr. Brannick to at least talk and see some prices and numbers from these places while simultaneously we're working on this and the policy, so we don't get behind, and all of a sudden, it's next season, and we still haven't done anything.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, the way that the Education Committee did the bully policy was that we actually used a lot of materials from Madison Schools, but Jared also contacted DPI, he took these materials from MMSD, he kind of talked then to admin, I mean, so we had somebody who was in the schools, who this was there, kind of charged to kind of continue to forward on. That process seemed to work pretty efficiently, in my opinion, as we have, I think, the second reading tonight, right, and we're going to move forward. I wonder if there would be a way for us to do a similar piece, or if you feel like it should stay within the board, and there should be a board member that kind of steps up and say, I'm going to do that. I'm only wondering it because I feel as though perhaps with the health emphasis that's involved, or the history of who was on this committee before, I don't know if there was somebody from the schools, if that might be a strategy that we could use. So, a lot, Jared did a lot of the background work and brought drafts to the table, and then we moved it forward pretty quickly, and intensely, but we did do it pretty quickly.
Last time around, Mr. Brannick did that heavy lifting.
Yeah.
You know, so you're comparing it to the bullying policy, that's pretty much exactly what Mike did for us two years ago. And Mike, some of that information that he put together has been provided to us?
Great.
I don't know, do you care, do you recall how you collected that? Because I know you polled a number of different districts, and you got as far as size and costs and things of that nature. Do you want to add in at all to Mary's point?
Sure. You know, there's, you got the stuff that I had electronically.
Yep.
I mean, I have a, I have a file of all of the things that we discussed, and some of the different directions that we tried to take. The presentation was made at the Marketing Committee, we looked to go in a different direction at that point in time, so I have a file, I would be more than happy to share with you, it's just, it's going to be a case where it is all on paper, a lot of notes and things that were just taken at that point, but.
So, Mary, you, you came in and presented to us, and.
And, just to throw this out there, I think that's maybe where we got the big hangup, I came to you with something that I had operated under in a previous district, and that seemed to be very unacceptable here as a whole in this culture. And I understood that, and then made a change to, can we do some of these other things, and then we seemed to keep going back to, I'm going to stay away from the A word, I'm not going to use it anymore, we're going to do something else, but that, I don't think that we're going to be able to go forward with what I brought to you initially, that just didn't seem to be eligible to anyone. So, I'm fine with that, I'm just to the point now where we have a football scoreboard that does not work, we have a play on Friday, I don't know what I'm going to do, I mean, the numbers go up there in the score, but I can't put half the other information on it, because the board's dead, it's 27 years old, like a soccer board, we fixed it at the start of the season, they told me at that point in time, if you come back to me again, we probably aren't going to be able to fix it. Basketball scoreboard in the auxiliary gym lights up, and that's all it does. I mean, we're just getting to the point where we've got to do something, and I don't know what that answer is, if it's not what we're talking about here, then it's got to be something else, and I'm looking to that direction from you, I certainly would be more than willing to share everything that I had prior to this, but we have to figure out some way if we're going to continue these programs to fund things that we're doing.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. So, recommendation was to, I think your recommendation was to send this to policy for consideration. I know Diana, you have a copy of Middleton's?
I do.
So maybe that's something that we could provide the Policy Committee prior to that meeting. And as far as setting a timeframe, I guess that'll be for that committee to discuss, but maybe look at, you know, because I think it is, you know, the speed, the ability to identify where we're headed with this and do it quickly, and understand that it's going to be a living document for a little bit. Just to get something put together and formalized, I think that would be good.
And was, was Mr. Brannick chosen because he's the athletic person, and we thought most of this money was going to be around athletics?
He had the most experience with it, so when he first came here, as he mentioned, his last district.
Okay.
Did advertising.
Okay.
And, you know, he came in with, and I keep coming back to you, but it's because you had a number of different documents that supported, or outlined, a vision for advertising within the district. Now, correct, advertising fell flat on its face, and it continues to, to some degree anyway. But, it's the, you know, sponsorship, sorry Keith, sponsorship advertising to be determined, but, you know, that's why he's got a lot of information to share.
Sure.
And for the new board members, I think there's a lot of information to be learned from that as well, because it's, what is the differentiation between advertising versus sponsorship, sponsorship versus donations, and things of that nature? So, food for thought. In regards to the boards that are, like the football field board, I mean, that's something that I think would be, you know, well within your rights to find out whether or not that can be repaired in time for our Friday game. If it can't be repaired, it doesn't matter, because there's no way we're going to get it replaced by Friday.
Yeah, they already looked at it today, right?
Nothing.
Yeah.
Go back to the little flicky numbers? So, sorry, not making light of it, but a little. So, sorry, not making light of it, but a little bit. So, we need to figure that out. So, with that, without objection, we'll send this to the policy committee, and then, I guess, leave it up to you guys as far as if you want to use another district policy to set the foundation, and then use that as a place to start from.
Well, to take your one sentence about a living document, can we then, I think we all sort of rudimentarily agree, can we give Mike at least the option to start talking to people and see what cost would be and what contract relationship would be? That might help load into the discussion.
Well, we're going to have to find out the costs regardless. If he were to reach out to potential sponsors, I see some danger in that. Because if we haven't made a decision as a district whether or not we're going to endorse that or support it, then we may be getting these people engaged and spending cycles of his for no good reason. I think it would be very helpful for us to know what the cost to these boards would be, and start to get some quotes put together on that. But my preference would be to wait, my preference, and it's just me, so, you know, it's up to the board, but, you know, is to wait and see which direction we're going to go with this before we start to actually engage anybody that might be willing to give the money.
I agree.
Anybody else care to weigh in on that?
No, I agree. And I think there's two parts. There's a policy that's needed, but then there's also the procedures, similar to the bully materials, where we had the policy, but then we also had the procedures on how is that going to happen? So, they're two pretty independent parts, actually. And that, I would see that procedures part is definitely falls within Mr. Baronic, but I would also say it falls under Scott's work in terms of budgeting and understanding, and then possibly also Pam Shaw is the school nurse, so that we have some indication as well. So, I would see policy being informed by policy group, but the procedures actually, I think, need to come from a couple of different voices at the table, potentially.
Are you okay with that? Okay. All right. So, it's off to policy committee. Thank you. I got to get away from, get back to my agenda here. All right. 8A, consideration of youth options, spring 2014.
Okay. And this is meeting the deadline to have the board approve possible youth options for the spring. We actually only have one student requesting at this time.
Second. We can't legally deny that.
No.
No, understood. I'm laughing at the willingness of people to make motions. So, motion by Peter, seconded by Keith. Any questions, comments on this? Everybody knows what it is. You're all good. Okay.
Like Jeopardy, you have to be quick.
Yeah, we got to handle clickers.
First buzzer.
Usually Jeff's the winner.
All right. So, motion by Peter, seconded by Keith to approve. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. 8B, removal of issuance of diplomas to students completing alternative high school programs policy, 345.63.
Right. And that was in your board packet. And this came up just as a regular review by the policy committee. We're trying to go through a few new policies each time, so this was one that came up for review. And when we looked at it, I talked to Stephanie, too. We don't even use the Dane County Transition School anymore. And really, what is included as far as alternatives leading to graduation or diploma is now provided in our graduation policy that is having its second reading tonight. So, we really, this doesn't really provide any new guidance, so it's probably not necessary to have this policy anymore.
Move to remove. Second.
Peter and Leah?
Diana.
Diana? Okay. Any other questions on this one? Comments? Seeing none. Motion by Peter, seconded by Diana for the removal. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. 8C, policies, first reading.
And that one is, there was a lot of interest to have student representation on the board. I came up with some information from WSB, shared that with Stephanie, who shared that with her student council advisors. They looked through some of the sample policies, really liked Wanakes policy, so we kind of mirrored our policy off Wanakes, because that was out there. It's kind of like using grownups in Middleton's. We did make some adjustments to it. One of their concerns was timeframe, because some of our meetings do go until quite late. They're on a school night, so we did add that language. And that was kind of coming from the student council advisor. They just had some concerns, because a lot of these kids that would be involved with this are also involved in a lot of activities, have a rigorous academic schedule already, and so there was a concern about staying here until 11 o'clock at night on a school night. So, we did add that language, which they didn't have in their policy. But otherwise, it went through that, and they all thought it was acceptable.
So, if I read this correctly, then so there'd be a student, and then the student council would have an alternate student as well?
Mm-hmm. So, that if that first student couldn't make it, there'd be a, because it is a lot. And like I said, a lot of those students are involved with many activities, so there are going to be times that that one person couldn't make every meeting, so.
Thank you. Keith? I'm assuming that this, you know, I have to only assume something. I'm assuming that this student would not be paid.
No.
Is this?
Correct.
I mean, I'm correcting. Okay. Because I know, I don't want junior to come to annual meeting and say, I accept this salary that's set at the annual meeting for the school board. Is it necessary to put that, put a paragraph in there that the student will not receive?
It's not a paid position, or?
We're, you know, for what it's worth, we're salaried as school board members.
Right.
They aren't a board of school board members, though. They're just here to participate in the discussion and contribute to the discussion, so they aren't a school board member.
They're actually a representative.
I'm just looking to avoid any confusion.
Well, it would be very easy to add in a point saying this is a non-compensated position. I don't know that...
On that same note, can they earn silver court hours for being on the school board? I'm just asking now, because if we're talking about pay to them, that could be, you know, a big deal.
I'll have to check my own policy on that.
So, food for thought. First reading, so.
First reading.
Anything else on this one? 345.63. Okay. Seeing none. Our next one? Deb, you want to introduce us to that?
The next one also came mainly because we've been kind of faced with issues of having board vacancies and really no policy in which to fill those, not a formal policy. So, I kind of did the same thing I did with the student representation. I used kind of a combination of different neighboring districts and some guidance from WSB, and made it a very, very simplified policy that would cover us.
I have one thing.
Yeah.
I think because this came up when we did this before, we should have something on, in the event of a tie, we're going to do A, B, C, or D. Something about being a tie should be in the policy, because I know that came up. Would we flip a coin? Would we, what would we do? So...
Yeah, because we have six members, right?
Right.
I also think that there should be a minimum window of service. For example, if there's less than six months, if there's less, if there's, I would just off that arbitrarily, if there's less than six months remaining on the term of someone who resigns, dies, or is removed, that we'd simply let the next election cycle fill the position. I'm not saying six months is the right number, just seems to me that if you appoint someone and they serve for less than six months, we're just using up a lot of their time for a brief period. There is a learning curve. I don't care how smart you are and how much homework you do, there's a learning curve in these positions. So, and I just throw the six months out there as an arbitrary number. That's something that I would recommend, but if it's nine months, or if it's eight months, or something like that.
Well, I would agree, because if they leave less than six months, you still have a month or so you have to collect applications. Then you have to, I mean, you're still looking at a month and a half. You're going to be vacant anyway while you're trying to fill the position, so.
I mean, I think there is a point where it just becomes counterproductive to fill a position for such a short period of time.
I agree.
Only to replace them again come May 1st or less. Not in any way.
Deb, you want to wordsmith something?
Yes. But I guess, I mean, do we think six months seems reasonable, or?
I guess I would ask us to check with legal counsel on that, because I think that there's an obligation because of the voting nature, that if we're not, if we're a member of six, we could have a split vote on everything. So, I wonder if there's a legal implication to that, and so I would either check with WASB or our own legal counsel to see if there's some implication of that. If they say six months or whatever, you know, but there might be some. I don't think we can decide that we're okay not having a board that can come to decision, potentially. It could be split on every single vote.
I was thinking on the policy to say something, like put an option that the board, the board has, I don't know, maybe legal would say, I'm all up to lunch on this, that the remaining board has the option of keeping a position vacant for up to six months, you know?
So, I just think we have to check and see if we can.
Or wording something to that.
If we can do.
Yeah.
I will check and see.
Are there any statutes around that?
The statute on...
I believe state statute, you're not required to fill that position.
No. The statute on board vacancy is very, I think I sent it to the board, it's like, very vague and very short. It's not explicit at all.
It only deals with the timing of the next election.
Of the next election, yes. So, it doesn't provide a lot of guidance.
Because I think...
It doesn't hurt confirming your point. I mean, that's very safe. It doesn't hurt to do that.
Keith? No, I just got to say, it seems to me that when we appointed John Kooz a few years ago, or we, we were given documents saying the board may do the following, from WASB, I don't think there's anything that said the board shall do the following. I think we were given ways, ways that we could fill the position. But it seems to me, I think Peter's right, I don't think there's a requirement, a legal requirement.
Well, you've got a copy of it, and then also, I spoke with Dan Mallon, who's one of the attorneys at WSB prior to Diana's joining us. And it is pretty much up to the board to figure out how we want to fill that position, or if to fill it. But...
But I also think this is a big step in the right direction, so we don't have to, like, reinvent or, you know, we don't have to invent a policy every time there's a vacancy on the board.
Right.
It's actually best for us to do it, because we've gone through it. So, four years down the road, if the board has never had a vacancy, it's hard to have that understanding of the history right now.
Yeah. So, great. I think what we've got is a fantastic start. We just have to put in the language around a tiebreaker, and then a minimum time to serve as a guideline, I think is what that would be, right? Anything else on 8C? 9A, consideration of additional revenue for 2013-14. So...
We just left, the board wanted to leave it on the agenda again.
Yeah. So, we have received the recommendations from the administration on the top three priorities for the additional funds that are available. We have an executive session later this evening to consider salaries and fringe benefits and professional development for individual staff members, which is why it's closed session. It's 19.851 CE and F. So, but that's specific to particular employees. But we had also talked about professional development as being, so, you know, salary or fringe benefit increases. Professional development was another one. And then the third was class sizes, which I hesitate on, because I'm not sure if that was directly tied to the eighth grade teacher that we already gave authorization to, but it's certainly something to keep in mind.
It was originally. That's how it came about, but...
So, those are the three things that we've got to discuss and prioritize.
If I may, I don't think that's just the only three things. I think that was only a recommendation from admin council.
Correct.
It's not fair to pigeonhole us into thinking that's all, because that was the recommendations. I want it to be...
I thought I said the administration, but regardless, yeah.
Because there's, I mean, prime example, in services, I agree with that one. We have a phenomenal resource that, we have somebody who teaches about anti-bullying techniques that, I think you mentioned, who's from the Waukesha district.
Hamilton-Sussex.
Yeah. We need to be doing some more of those things. That person should have been here a year ago when it was first brought up, and I don't know why they're here. We have a huge gap in our technology abilities. So, I don't want us to pigeonhole, think those are the only three options. I want us to make sure that there's other. I'm not opposed to a pay raise. I think that's something important, but let's not get fooled, though, just to make sure that there are other things we need to shore up in our district as well.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And so, if I didn't say the administration, I apologize. But, you know, to go with your thought, because I agree, even though we just had a referendum get approved for maintenance within the district, there's a lot of maintenance that's not done.
Correct.
And as we have conversations about a potential pool or an auditorium, things of that nature, we better have our maintenance figured out for the district before we go and we add more overhead to what we already have. If we can't figure out a way to get the numbers to work as we stand today, then we're, things are not in sync as far as what our priorities are, in my opinion. So, there's certainly things to consider beyond those three, but we had specifically asked the administration for their priorities, and that's what they provided. So...
I just wanted to be clear on that, that there's a lot of options.
Right.
Thank you.
Now, do we know, what is the CPI at currently? It's 2.07.
2.07 for any July 1 contract. Yep.
And a lot of districts in our area, that's pretty much, a lot of them went with 2 or
2.07 that have already settled.
Of course.
Have we got a new projection, then, with the governor signing the new law in place?
That does not change our overall revenue limit. What it does is it provides us more state aid, so it would reduce our tax levy, the bottom line tax levy.
Does it change that?
It doesn't change our revenue limit at all.
So, to one bucket into another, isn't that kind of how it works?
Right. Exactly. That's how it works. Our total revenue limit would stay the same, but we would have more coming from the state, so we'd have less that have to come from local. And that's why we couldn't set our levy until we know this amount, because it will affect our levy.
So, that what the governor signed Saturday really does not increase the dollars coming into our district?
No. It's a property tax rebate. It's really kind, they did it in a different way, but that's really what it comes down to.
And I just want to say, I want us to be very clear with our staff, and I hope they don't think we're dragging, we're not dragging our feet. We're trying to make the best, well-informed, educated decisions on what is very limited pot of money. So, I hope there's no, there shouldn't be a perception that we're dragging our feet. The perception should be that we're trying to make the best decisions for everyone. And as Mary had said earlier, the kids are the final avenue, so we're trying to make sure we weigh all those sorts of things.
Okay. Anybody have thoughts around priorities for this?
Can I just offer another thing that's come up as recently as tonight? It wasn't a big surprise, but several years ago, shortly after you and I got on the board, there was talk about the establishment of a capital fund, like a separate savings account that would be specifically for maintenance projects that would come up, that would probably put a strain on any given year's maintenance project, but a building fund, going like that. And one of our neighbors called me to task after the referendum passed, and he said, he said, I really want to know, I generally support all that the school board tries to do. He said, but I want you to know, I voted against the referendum. And I said, well, why is that? And he said, well, I voted against the referendum because the school district has never had a capital fund or a building fund, and you've never put money aside for rainy day maintenance items. Now, just tonight, we heard about scoreboards, and we heard about a track that's crumbling and we heard about a track that's crumbling and probably going to be very unsafe in the near future. And the, the track deterioration didn't happen overnight. There wasn't a catastrophic, catastrophic event that caused it. It's been happening since it was built. And he's right. We have not set money aside for something like this. So tonight, Mike came to the BJT meeting with, with this question for us, and we didn't really have a good answer for him at the time, is that, okay, the track needs to be fixed, where's the money going to come from? Or are we going to fix it? The scoreboards don't work. Are we going to fix them? If so, where's the money going to come from? And so I think that's yet another option on any increase of revenue that we have to think of sooner or later. I think it would be in our, the school district's long-term best interest to establish some type of building savings account or capital fund, whatever the proper term would be. You know, we set some money aside every year for those maintenance issues that come up that we can't afford. It's nice BJT meeting tonight. We, I brought up the question again about those. I want to say those stink in bathrooms, and there's no pun intended there. There are bathrooms that stink in our high school. And so hopefully, they're going to be back on the, on the project list for completion next year. But we have been deferring a lot of these things year after year, and then the problem comes up, we say, "Well, where's the money going to come from?" And we have not put, even if we put a small percentage of this money aside for a capital fund, I think we need to start soon getting in the habit of putting money aside instead of assuming that a referendum is going to pass every so many years when we get, fall behind.
Yeah. Now, I'm trying to go back here, OAs, and it seems to me that when we've had that conversation in the past, when we would ask our former superintendent, what would happen in the event of a major expense, and we didn't have a fund for it? Correct me if I'm wrong, and I look at Scott, because his, his memory is much better than mine. That is, that's a situation where we would pull from fund equity, would have been it?
Correct.
Okay. So, now, I can't believe that using fund equity in that manner is necessarily a healthy way of doing this. So my, where I'm headed is how do we fund it? So, you know, we may have these unexpected funds currently that we need to figure out, prioritize how they should be distributed, but that's not going to happen every year. So in the creation of a capital expense fund for maintenance items, how would that be funded? Is that budgeted each year? And I mean, I, I don't know how we would do this. Deb, do you have?
Well, there is such a thing called Fund 41. Generally, that's a benefit to districts that are low state aid, just because of how it, how it gets put into the formula. But a, a number of districts use that, but you have to decide that at an annual meeting, and also determine how much of your general fund, your, what would normally be your fund $10 under revenue limit would be set aside for this. And then you have to set it aside in a separate fund and only use it for capital projects. And that's, I mean, that is one way districts do that. And if, like I said, a lot of times, just because of how the system works, a lot of districts that are very low aided do that because it spreads out the effect on what little aid they get. So we are positively aided districts, so it wouldn't help us really that much in that respect, but it would help us by having that money put aside for capital projects in the future. But then it's restricted for that. It's decided at the annual meeting, we're going to put, let's say, $30,000 this year, and then you have to put it in there, and you can't use it for anything other than capital projects. But a lot of things fall under that. I don't know, Scott, if you have anything to add to that. I did Fund 41 at DPI. That was part of my job, so I, I have learned quite a bit about it. So, districts use it for a variety of reasons, but some do use it just for, for that purpose. But then you're deciding very early that in the year, we're going to set aside $30,000, $40,000, and then it is in a separate fund and can only be used for capital projects that meet the requirement.
So my understanding from that sort of fund would be if the roof blows off tomorrow because we get hit by a hurricane, okay, or whatever, some catastrophic event. It's not because we know the bathroom needs to be fixed and we've known it for five years. That's my understanding of it. So what I'm wondering about is, is that more strategic planning that we need to sit down and look at buildings and grounds, and we need to look at, I still go back to the fact that we don't have a strategic plan in our, in our district. And I understand there's cost, and I understand there's time, and I get all of that. But it feels to me like we're kind of throwing a dart at the wall on what we as, you know, seven people know versus what, you know, our entire district and kind of getting that view. I, I'm very nervous making decisions about my view when I know that there's so many, there's such a big overarching thing. So I guess I'm asking about the strategic plan, and I know it's D, so I don't mean to move us ahead, but I, I'm having a hard time having the conversation about A without thinking about that piece and making those decisions, so.
But a lot of districts do, I mean, that, they know, well, we know in three years we're going to have to replace-
Right.
-the roof at the middle school, or replace the HVAC system at the middle school, and they start putting money aside. They do use Fund 41. Some do for that purpose.
Yeah, and then, and I agree that, I, I think this would be an integral part of a strategic plan. That'd be part of a, like a five-year maintenance plan, or a five-year maintenance schedule, or something like that. So we know that, you know, this is the year that we're going to fix such and such, and it's going to cost us $90,000 in three years, so we're going to put $30,000 away for three years, and when we get there, we know that we're going to need it, that just something, stuff like that. And I use a track as the most recent example because I don't think any of us are surprised that that track is now in bad shape. It's been gradually deteriorating over time, but we have not set money aside for that track or a project like that track. And so now that we've got the question tonight, we need to fix the track and where's the money coming?
That come up at buildings and grounds?
Yes.
Also, our resurfacing didn't work as well as?
Well, really, we just did the painting.
The patch gap.
Yeah, it was kind of like just to keep, so we can use it for track next spring, but we need to look at something for, because the upcoming year, we host a very large track meet, and the track is in very good condition.
I think Mary's got a very valid point tying into the strategic plan, because a strategic plan should also include a plan that has a sustainable budget.
Absolutely.
You know, we brought up a couple points, but we just asked Randy to do this exact same thing, to lay out a timeframe of what's replaceable, what's our process and all that. We should definitely include a strategic plan. I'm very leery of using fund equity for anything. One, because it's towered to our interest rates on our borrowing, and how we're evaluated financially in our district. And we already borrow a ton of money and pay a lot of interest to make up payroll gaps in June. So I think that should all be part of our strategic plan and have those sorts of mindsets. But I'm very leery of taking any money from fund equity because it is tied to a lot of those borrowing. And right now, we're in a very low interest rate period, but that won't always be so. And we have to start planning for that as well down the road. And that healthy fund equity offsets some of those things.
So in an effort for the next time we talk about this, I guess maybe have your own lists created, not that you necessarily have to share, but I think it might help get, if you have all your ideas on paper as far as what your feeling, priority should be, that may help the conversation move forward. We've got feedback from administration. We certainly know that there's other areas that need attention, but at the same time, we need to start making some decisions on this and keep this moving forward. As we approach the end of the year, there's a lot of things that happen, and all of a sudden, we're going to be out of runway, and we are going to have to make a decision. And I think we'd much rather take our time and make the correct decision than be forced into one. So if that sounds good, I think this is all good conversation because it gives us some more to think about. But at the same time, we need to, at our next meeting, come with some ideas that, what your priorities are, and we can have a healthy conversation about that and hopefully come to some conclusion on this. Is that all right? Anybody have anything else to add? Diana?
We were just talking about the scoreboard. I just keep thinking about the scoreboard, and are we going to pay for the scoreboard?
Yeah.
And I, I really don't like the idea of putting out fires. You know, it seems like we run around and put out fires. I really like the idea of having some sort of strategic plan, buildings included, and saying, well, this is supposed to last this long. We know that this will be, need to be replaced. Having a fund that we could put money in could be a great idea to be more proactive.
Okay, so we'll be back on this conversation in about 10 minutes, because we've got 9D coming up. So, so moving on, we've got 9B, consideration to change in employee handbook. Section BC, you know, I thought I should have looked that up. What is VC in Roman numerals? We don't get that high very often. Isn't that VC?
Oh.
Never mind, I'll look it up later. So the change in the employee handbook.
You have that in your packet, and I have ran this past the admin council, and it's pretty much what they're doing in a lot of cases. And it's, like I, I mentioned last time, it's incorporating what has been in the teacher resource guide now, and used to be the teacher handbook in prior years. So we've kind of incorporated that language into one document.
So this is more in line with current practice?
Right.
Questions? And Diana, was that you that second? No questions on this? I know that Deb explained it pretty thoroughly at our last meeting. No questions? Okay. We have a motion by Peter, seconded by Diana, to accept the recommended changes. All in favor? I. I opposed. Okay. 9D, strategic planning. Deb, you want to start this one up again?
Yes. I actually have now two pretty firm quotes, one that's going to have, have his, he's given me kind of a general idea of what he's done in the past for districts. And then I have two people from CISA too that help districts with the same process that they've kind of been in and out, so they're trying to come up with a time where we can talk about this. But what seems to be kind of a general theme is they want to know what timeframe the board is looking at as far as like getting started on this process, kind of moving ahead. They need to know that for their own, you know, if I bring these four proposals to the board at the next regular meeting or the following meeting, you know, where, where does the board see that going as a schedule? Because I have some, a couple people are pretty committed to projects, so they want to see how much, you know, what the timeline is looking like, that our board's interested in moving ahead on this.
So I, I guess I'm confused. So do they think, to me, this sounds, this is a 12 to 18-month project.
Right.
So are they saying, we're only going to, we're going to wait till we do this and only give you a few hours here or there? I mean, they really should be with us from day one to day 18 months later.
Yeah, in part, they are, they're, that's how they all first see this. In fact, some of them see it as more like a two or three-year project. And the first year being the intensive work, and then kind of more reviewing and modifying the next two years. But they want to know, like, what is our start, what, like timeframe does the board want to get started on this and really get moving on it? So they have an idea as they're looking at this.
Well, I would have said two years ago was the start date. The next best day is tomorrow. This is something that, it was during the interview process, we asked you those questions. I don't see a reason why we should even delay one more day, and I would see it would take as long as it would take. So whether it's 18 months or two years, they're telling you two to three years, it's probably going to be two to three years.
But do, are you looking at getting, you know, looking at proposals at the next meeting or the following meeting, and then by December or January, getting the process started?
My recommendation would be that if we engage in contract with somebody, that we don't start until January, until that second meeting of January. And the reason being is the end of the year is going to get crazy for a lot of people. And this is going to be another demand on our time, as well as other people within the district. And I think, you know, if we're going as far as hiring somebody to come in and help us through this process, I want to make sure that everybody is not thinking about what family members are coming over, or where you're headed for the holidays, or, you know, year-end reviews and things of that nature. We also have a lot of contracts that are going to be needing consideration over that same stretch of time. So, yeah.
So I'm not opposed to that, but we need to, I really think we should pick a time and at least get the, get everything rolling.
Okay, okay. Keith?
I would be in favor of, with a caveat here, I'd be in favor of putting this off until we come back from the school board convention. But I don't want to assume, again, I don't assume anybody's scheduled availability for the school board convention, because last year, there were at least two breakout sessions put on my school districts that were, had success stories on the development and the writing of a strategic plan in the district. And I went to one of them, and it was, it was exceptional. I believe that was the, your colleague from Bloomer.
Yes, and Mike Shuck, who helps them, is one of the people, I know him as well, and he's one that has already submitted a-
Because I was thinking that, I believe it was just a 50-minute session, but it was, it was eye-opening. And I had a different view of school district strategic plans after seeing that session. And so even if we don't avail ourselves of this year's offerings at the school board convention as a group, maybe we could pay travel, mileage reimbursement and, and get the, that session presented to us from, from Bloomer. It was, it was an outstanding breakout session. And it's, and it's a success story, I'm trying to, trying to talk here. And I thought, wow, if they can do it, then we can too. But it was a lot more involved than I ever appreciated.
Sure.
Can I ask, can we review proposals and look at what everybody's offering and approve somebody to do this with us and say, our start date is whatever date we want to do it, but at least we're moving forward and getting things kind of going? I mean, can we do that before even January and say, okay, this is, this is when we're going to start, but we can look at proposals in the meantime?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, like, for me, if it were a second week of January, or if it, do we know in state convention this is here?
22nd.
22nd through the 25th? So if it were the first week of February, or first meeting in February, I mean, we would absolutely want to have somebody sign down by that time, and then the information that we would glean from the convention would just be added benefit. So, yeah, I would agree.
And that would help give direction for any of those that, you know, we could bring back information.
Okay. So that being said, does that give you an idea?
Mm-hmm.
Is everybody okay with that?
That's come up, so.
How are we funding it?
Well, it's a non-budgeted item, so my guess is that it would be fund equity, right?
And it's roughly, I mean, Scott and I have talked about it a little bit. It seems like the, the ones that we've gotten in, $10,000 for the facilitator, about $8,000 to $10,000. And it really depends on how involved, I mean, if we want to have them stay on and follow through it.
How many, how much, how many years is the plan then for the strategic?
Well, and now we have, usually it's a five-year. But that would have to be kind of decided as we're going through kind of that whole, they would lead the group through that process. But a lot of them are five years and reviewed annually. And one thing, I mean, we really have to make sure, I, I don't remember what district it was. I want to, I think it was SOC. So they did one a long time ago, and they never did anything with, you know, like-
Yeah.
So it needs to be something that everyone buys into and really follows through. Otherwise, we're wasting time and money to do it. And I think some districts find they do that. They put all this time and energy into it, and it really never moves. So, I mean, we have to make sure that the processing is included in that, how we're going to see it through.
Okay, so.
So I'll tell them, like, we're looking at the beginning of February, but we make a decision on-
Well, prior to that, right.
-a facilitator before that.
So, yeah, we'd want to look at whatever their proposal would be, and we can actually start that process. But then with the goal of actually starting-
Early February.
-the engagement, early February. That gives us the 22nd through 25th of January to make state convention. I know the last two years, we haven't had a lot of people that have gone, so I'm hopeful that some people have that on their calendars already to be able to go. And then, yeah, I guess other notes I was just taking as far as the far as the plan. So, sound good to everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Policy, second reading, uh, high school grade level status policy, 345.43. Peter, motion approved. Diana, thank you. Questions or comments on this one?
And that one, I don't think any changes were recommended from the first reading. So it's pretty much the same as it was the last meeting.
Yeah, that's pretty straightforward too. Anybody have questions on that one? Just removing one line, adding a new one. So, okay, motion by Peter, seconded by Diana. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, our next one is 345.6.
The graduation policy, that one also did not have any changes from the last one to this one.
Now this was, we had, there was one question about math. Wasn't there any on that one? No.
Well, it did come up at some point. We may look at changing that as well, but right now it was just the science.
Yeah, it's not on there. Okay. All right. So we've got a motion by Jeff, seconded by Peter. Other questions, comments on this one? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And then I believe it's our bullying policy. Yes, 443.
Which we had the first reading on that. It went back to the education committee. Jared got some responses from some community people and school people and that was reviewed with the education committee and a few minor tweaks were done to that policy.
Well, the one thing I don't see is the, we, the pledge. I didn't see anything that tied it to the co-curricular policy. And then the big question I have is we talked about training, but we don't actually say training or how we're going to do that. Has there been some discussion about that?
What is the pledge?
Well, a lot of districts have started to use as a pledge that you won't bully. Actually, that's one of the number one reasons, ways to decrease it.
I don't remember talking about that.
I brought it up at the last board meeting. That's why I was wondering where it went to.
I did, sorry, I didn't get that one.
Yeah.
I don't remember that. Is it in the minutes? I don't remember that.
Yeah, I asked it very directly and I asked it when I first brought this up a year ago. So that's why I was kind of wondering.
So the idea is that students take a pledge or sign something or do something?
Yeah.
I guess I don't know the research on that. So when we went through the policy, that did not come up. And I guess I'd want to see the policy, the research behind having kids take a policy or a pledge because what that tends to do is it increases the incidence of bullying. Um, it's actually kind of counterproductive. It's, it's just like what I said, when this policy goes into place, you're bringing it into the forefront of their brains. And so you tend to see an increase initially, but then it goes, you know, down based on the training. So I guess I'm, I'm not familiar with that, but we can certainly look at it. Um, I don't remember that being raised.
It's been raised for a year now, so that's why I'm kind of.
I don't remember overhearing about it.
Okay, regardless of whether or not anybody remembers it or not, um, you're interested in having a pledge.
Tying into the co-curriculars and then I want to see some definition of, we talked about training, but we don't actually, I'm fearful it's one thing and I'll get laid by the wayside again.
Okay, so.
Training, what training?
For staff.
Yeah. Because that's my question.
Jared, are you clear on those requests? Okay. So I guess if you have specifics you want to share, share them with Deb and then she can give them to Jared.
Well, those are the three big ones. And I've, like I said, shared them many a time, so.
I'm just surprised, well, okay. All right. So we'll have another reading on this. Those are the three then for this next reading.
Correct.
So I have a question just about procedure and policy.
Yeah.
Is this appropriate to ask here or do you want me to ask it later? Want to, because I'm wondering, when does the policy move forward? I mean, there's been hours of work done on it and I feel like it's just dragging and dragging and we have everything set to go. When do we pull it to vote and say, it's good, go?
All you have to do is make a motion. And if you get a second and you get a majority of people to vote, we can pass this tonight.
Okay.
And it can be back on our agenda in two weeks to make modifications. So you can absolutely do that right now if you'd like.
So I'd like to make a motion to pass the bully policy, which has been forwarded as a second reading for tonight.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Leah. Any further conversation on this?
I'll just echo those points. I'm all in favor of moving it forward, but I feel somewhat slighted that those comments have been ignored for a year now. So remember, this was my issue that I brought up a year ago and I've been pushing it. I'm glad we've made the progress on it. And I, the data will show you that a pledge drastically drops the bullying effect.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second to approve it. We can absolutely get this back on the agenda for our next meeting, but at least it gets this in place.
And then it's a simple modification. Like I said, I agree with that. But those are three things that, and the training is a big key in this.
Sure. Okay, anybody else? Questions, comments on this one? Okay, motion by Mary, seconded by Leah. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. So we'll get that on the futures, Peta. Futures, Peta. All of a sudden I'm from out east. Uh, Peter. So, all right. Um, must mean, must mean it's about time to go home.
Say a success story again.
All right. Uh, we are back to citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments? Yes, sir.
You do, by my name, my name is Adrian Bartha. Um, I'd like to return to the advertising just briefly because I know you still have a lot of work to do. Um, just to clarify, no one objects to donations and community support at the schools. I think we all agree that that's a crucial function of the school. Um, the question is who controls the messages that we put in the public spaces? Across the street, outside of the auditorium, there are plaques recognizing the donors to the music program. They're discreet, they're public, they don't display logos, they don't display images, but they recognize the people who have supported those programs. And they do so in a way that is not aimed at marketing to children. Because marketing to children is morally questionable and doing so in public spaces, I think, is doubly so. Um, you have students in a public space for an educational process and you are selling them, you're selling things to them, which I think is a questionable function, no matter how much we may need the money. Um, funding schools is a function for adults and it's not something that we need to target at the children to do. It's our job to support the football program. If we need, if we as a community need scoreboards, we need to do that, not by selling things to the children, but by acting as adults and finding other ways to do that. So, um, I think it's just a very questionable approach to target the children as a financial need. And I think that there are ways to recognize anyone who wants to donate money and to, um, support the organizations that want to support the school without plastering logos on the school as if we were a NASCAR factory. So I, I look forward to the continuing conversation the board will have and I hope that things move on and the policy committee will be out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, Chris?
I just, I'm on the same topic. I just wanted to talk about the history with the policy, which I think you were getting at, Mary. Um, Mike did bring in that policy that you were referring to from previous school district. But part of what got some of us here to the meeting two years ago was the fact that the wellness committee was simultaneously writing a policy. And I believe it was Pam Shaw who had drawn policies from other school districts, as you guys have talked about doing in other areas. And then it was that we found out that simultaneously there was talk of a policy being written that was separate from the wellness policy that was being written. So there is some history there with, um, the staff of that, that safety committee or health committee, whatever it's called, here in the district working on this. And there are policies that are in Pam's hands that were written by the wellness committee.
Thank you. Other citizens' comments? Peter?
I don't know if people are public aware, but Ms. Seidel and I, Mr. Severs and Mr. Little had our first meeting about the indoor facilities. I want to thank Mary for her time. We met at the library. We have our next one, November 14th. So everybody's invited to attend. Very productive, beginning, early discussions.
Excellent. Um, other citizens' comments? Okay, um, future agenda items, we've got, um, the bullying policy again. The other thing, um, well, I guess for future agenda items, did you have anything else?
No, besides the ones that we're kind of carrying.
Ongoing, right. Okay. Does anybody have any new items that they'd like on the agenda?
I had emailed Deb last week, so.
I've got that one because you see.
Summer enrichment.
Summer enrichment?
Mm-hmm.
And then our, how to demonstrate our academic progress. I'm assuming that's part of the strategic plan, but something to.
Yeah, okay, okay. Um, anything else for future agenda items? No? On the schedule of next meetings, you've got the list there. There is, however, our next regular board meeting, November 4th, both Keith and I are going to be gone that day. And, um, currently it's either the president or the vice president, my understanding.
Under statute, yes.
Under statute, that needs to run a board meeting. So Keith, when are you back?
Thursday.
And I am back Wednesday, the 6th, which is the day that we have to actually pass our levy. So, um, I can either, and when do you leave?
Sunday.
This coming Sunday?
A week from Sunday.
A week from Sunday.
Third through the, third through the 7th, third through the 8th, Sunday through Thursday. I leave Sunday and come back Thursday.
What about next week? Because we will have DPI's information by Wednesday, Thursday, probably at the latest. So we could do the set of levy and that.
I will be gone for the next two weeks.
Oh, so you're gone all next week? Okay. I didn't realize you were gone all next week.
Yeah, so but Keith is here, so he could run the meeting.
The 28th.
If that works for everyone.
We have a, um, education.
Yeah, at 5:30. So we could meet at 7:00.
And the levy meeting's not going to take a long time.
No.
I mean, typically it doesn't, it's.
So we wouldn't have a meeting on the 4th?
Right.
Or we would still have a meeting on?
Correct.
So no meeting the 4th?
No meeting the 4th.
We'd have one on the 28th.
You would have one on the 28th.
With a focused agenda.
Correct.
Scott, do you see a problem with that?
No, not at all. Thank you for.
So that's a week from today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's us.
I can be here.
Does that work for at least four of us?
28th?
Yes. Initially, when they put this proposal out, it didn't sound like we'd have numbers until October 31st. And then there was like hardly any time in between, you know, really we were left with that week. Um, but now DPI is, they will have numbers for sure by the end of this week. So we would be able to do that on Monday.
So the 28th and no regular meeting then on the 4th?
Right.
Our next regular meeting one will be the 18th.
Yeah.
The 18th, yeah.
Yeah. One other thing, which I don't know, it only involves the education committee, but Jared and I probably would not be available on the November date. So we'll probably have to come up, if you can look at your calendars, those on the education committee, come up with an alternative date in November. Just so you're kind of aware of that and we can start looking.
Can we discuss that on the 28th?
Yes.
Yep.
All right. Um, at this point, a motion to go to.
I just want to make sure that personnel, so everybody knows personnel tomorrow is here.
Mm-hmm, we moved it.
Yeah, I saw the email, but yeah, you're right. It's not on here, is it? I guess there's no location on here.
There's no location. I think at the time we did this, we weren't, we were just kind of debating where it was going to be. We didn't really know how many people were going to be involved. And then I thought, well, it's going to be a small number. So I set it at the district office. Now it sounds like there might be more, so we moved it.
All right. So at this time, a motion for executive session to consider salaries, fringe benefits and professional development for specific staff members pursuant to 19.851 CE&F of Wisconsin statutes. Peter and Jeff, roll call. Mary?
Can we take like a?
Yeah, we will. Mary? Diana? Leah?
Yep.
Jeff?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Keith? Yes, I'm also a yes. Thank you. Uh, we'll take a five-minute break.